Okay, so I just want to thank everybody for being here on Zoom and taking some time to be here and go over the last logistics of the town meeting. We have arranged, obviously, for the football field to be used as a venue for this year's town meeting. Beth Willis, Kevin, myself, the Chief of Police, Jen Collins Brown, all of us have been preparing pretty diligently to go over as much of the detail and everything for this town meeting with the whole priority of keeping everybody safe and conducting business as as close to normal as we can. We have a check-in area and Beth's team, Beth is not on this call, but Beth's team will be checking everybody in. The chief will be escorting people to the line waiting for the check-in and the registration. And we will be giving out a kind of neon card to everybody. And that will be kind of like their ticket to go on to the field. If they need to use the lavatory of the facilities, they can keep that ticket with them so they won't have to go through the registration and they can go back up to the field house and use the facilities up there. We also have that area monitored as well so that one person will be using the facilities at once. We do have, like I said, Jen is going to be there, Jen and her team will be there in case we, they need to be for health reasons. We do have bottles of water for everybody with encouraged people with a letter that was sent out and probably everybody's received by now to bring umbrellas and if they need to bring a comfortable chair for themselves, they are not, they're encouraged to do so. So all of those, those types of items, I think, have been addressed pretty well. And I want to thank Kevin and Beth for leading that, that initiative. As far as the, the meeting, it starts, by the way, just so I can introduce everybody to Carolyn Murray. She's on the call as well as Lauren because Lauren cannot make the meeting on Saturday. So Carolyn will be there as our representative from KP. Do you want to, Kevin, you want to add anything to that before I go into the actual warrant?
Thank you to everybody for your, for supporting the effort in helping us get to where we are with town meeting. It has been a lot of work by a lot of people on the team and a true team effort to get here. But I'm grateful for, for everyone's efforts and I'm very thankful to be here tonight with you all. Excited for my first town meeting. You'll want to remember.
Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you all.
All right. So just to, just to go over the warrant itself. By the way, so all of you people in the Finance Committee know that the Board of Selectmen had the ability to reduce the quorum. But they chose that they wanted to be totally upfront with everybody and we still have the quorum of 100 citizens in place. There's no reduction in that. So we're expecting, I think we'll have well over probably 200 people there. I don't think we'll have a problem or an issue with the quorum. However, if it gets close to the start time, which is 8:30, and we're not seeing enough for a quorum, we will be making phone calls to our friends and closest relatives to show up to the town meeting. We do want to complete all of the agenda items, all of the articles in this town meeting. And we will endeavor to do that. Now, as, as the meeting goes on, and I'm just giving you a heads up on this. If we sense that the temperature is going up quickly and the sun is beating down, we have some techniques that we'll be employing, including using additional consent agendas to speed up the time of the meeting. So that will be an on-the-side call and I will take care of that from the moderator's mic. And again, it's a, it's a technique that's used where it needs 100% approval of all the people attending town meeting. So that's not going to really be an issue. But we do, we do have that as a, as a backup plan. The first few articles, obviously, on the budget will probably, well, what we need to do. Oh, one other thing before we start the annual meeting. When we honor people who have served, what we're going to do instead of having them come up and receive a certificate, we're just going to have them stand in place. We will have three mics on the field for people to speak when they want to talk. And we'll be having each of those mics will be monitored by someone if they need to be wiped down or sanitized for any, for any reason. So everything, again, is, is done in a pretty much keeping everybody safe and, and, and ready to, to speak. So the first few articles, we will have a report from the Chair of the Board of the Select Board. And that will be the only report that I have had anybody come to me and ask me about. So there's only one report in Article One. Article Two are balanced transfers and usually there's no, not too much of a discussion on that. And then we'll get into the Water Department Budget, excuse me, the Operating Budget.
Steve.
Yes.
Quick, quick question. I think generally the FinCon Chair delivers a quick report as well at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, then, you know, typically Karen has read her letter or reread her letter. I would ask, I would ask John, because your letter, letter was a little bit longer this year.
A little bit way down.
So you're gonna, yeah, just do the bullet points on it, but you will then be speaking before John Spencer will speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's the same number of words as Karen's from last year. Not that I look at details. I'll, Steve, I'll send you a draft.
Well, it's not necessary, really. It's not necessary. But, you know, again, I'll, everybody who is going to get up in front of a microphone, we just need to keep this meeting going as quickly as we can. We're doing things to make sure that everybody, our target really is, I was out on the football field today and it was after 10 o'clock and it was over 80 degrees on the football field today. I'm hoping for a breeze, but.
Has your tan.
We do need to keep the meeting moving. So what I would appreciate, if you could, John, is to send all of the, whoever is going to present what article.
I sent that about an hour and a, two hours ago, Steve. You should have an Excel version of it in your, in your inbox.
Okay, I'll check it out. I'll check it out. And, okay, so we're on to Article Three, which is the Comprehensive Honest Budget. And again, I think John Spencer is going to give some remarks as well as probably John Guido is going to echo it. That all of the committees and the people that are, and the Finance Committee have really pared down this budget. There's not a lot of, you know, there's not a lot of waste in this budget. So we will have that on our favor. So I don't think there'll be a lot of discussion. I'm anticipating probably the most discussion will take place on Article 21, which is the Home Rule. But you never know with town meeting, which one's gonna have the discussion. But for the most part, I think we're all good until Article 21. Does everybody have any questions until we get to the Home Rule petition article?
My question is, and I don't unfortunately happen to have it right in front of me, it's in another pile. Would it be appropriate and possible to kind of update us on the position of the FinCom, positive action or no action for these as you currently are sitting? And there may have been some updates since it was printed anyway.
We haven't, we haven't met since it was printed. So no, we've had, we've had no change on our votes.
Okay.
I've got a question, Steve. Historically, I read like everybody's $1 salary and stuff. Is that mandatory? Or can I loathe, you know, it's such a small part of the budget.
You gotta read.
No, you don't.
You know, I say, you know, the moderator gets 50 bucks, the selectmen get a dollar, you know, it's, I don't know. If we're trying to just cut down.
Oh, I see. When you read the line items?
Yeah. Is that, is that, is that a requirement to sort of talk about who the elect, how much the elected people are getting paid to, you know, buy their?
It's not a require, it's not a legal requirement. And I don't think it's, if you want to delete it, that's fine with me. I'm not.
Okay, I'll cut it down to a minimum.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator. To be precise, we didn't get our dollar. We had to sign it back over.
The moderator is building up the IRA because he has about his $50 for the last five years. So.
There's plenty of humor in this, but.
This sounds like an unfunded mandate, Steve. We'll have to talk.
All right, all right, keep going.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's true, there's no legal requirement to read every line. But that whole elected officials portion, you know, is the first part of the budget. So I think if you're not going to read every line, you probably just want to say that. I'm not going to read every line, but if someone has something they want to talk about, they should say, hold, or whatever it is. Because normally you do read every line and then you're going to read all the other lines. The other option would just be to do by, by area of government only. So.
That's what we do. We only do the, the subtotals. We don't do line by line.
Right.
Well, it's just for elected to read the line. Okay.
And historically, we've read like everybody that's elected and gets paid.
Yeah.
You know, I just wonder if it was a law, but, but it seems like it's, you know, it's a total of like five grand out of a $30 million budget. So.
Yeah, the subtotals are fine, even for the electeds.
All right. So if we, if we're lucky and we get to Article 21, 21st, then John Spencer, again, from the Board of Selectmen, once the Finance Committee, and this is going to be, was Lou, are you reading this one?
Yes. Lou.
Okay. So you'll explain the idea of what this, this is the most complex article we have. You'll explain that. I think John will speak to it as far as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And Kevin, do we have anybody else that's going to do any kind of a presentation before we open it up for discussion?
I may have, well, we're working on a joint statement from three department heads. Steve Shepard will not be in attendance. And they've done some really hard work and they wanted to be able to sort of voice what that, what the, from an operations standpoint, what it might look like as well. So I haven't, I don't have that in hand yet, Mr. Moderator. But once I do, I'll have a chance to kind of see if it aligns with sort of what the intent is.
Now, I believe, I believe, Dick, were you a minority vote on this on the Board of Selectmen?
I was.
Do you want to say anything to it or?
I hadn't, I'll, I'll let you know on Saturday.
Okay, but remember when you get up there, just, we want to keep all of those remarks to under three minutes. That's all.
You know, Mr. Moderator, I think we should offer a minority dissent on this one because I think it's.
Well, any, any of you, as citizens can certainly get up and give your minority opinion. That's.
Can I get a third party to do it? Or I like to pretend I'm neutral.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Lauren.
I think anybody who wants to can get in line and make a statement like they normally would. And I think in the past, you guys, not necessarily a FinCon, but even when it's been a school committee article, the school committee members have gotten in line. So yeah, I think you could ask someone else to do it. But if you wanted to, and I'm, I know that in the past when Dick's had something to say or, that we just, we've just gotten up from the table and gone over to speak. So, you know, if you wanted to line it up so someone else made your statement for you, I think there's nothing wrong with that being done from a regular microphone, no problem at all.
Yep. Okay.
The only thing that's a little different here is typically the selectmen do not stand up and speak on, on an item right out. Well. It's just fine to do, but the point is it's a little different. So yes, perhaps it is appropriate then to have both sides. And I hope we try to do that.
And yeah, and I'm totally in favor of both sides. To me, this is analogous to when we were voting the marijuana cultivation district overlay. And I got up and spoke specifically about how the vote on what seemed to be a different issue than the selection of approval or disapproval of a permit, how in fact, we would be using the vote of the town meeting as our guidance in taking that next step. So my intention is to be explanatory above all else. And just be sure, issues, and I'll admit there on what I consider the positive side are presented, but I'm not planning on taking a highly partisan view. I'm more than just trying to put the articles, put the information out.
And just going back to, because of the way that it's set up, it's sometimes it's difficult for anybody that's on the Finance Committee or the Board of Selectmen to speak as a regular citizen because they're separated from the rest of the. So anybody, when you want, just shoot me an email that you want to talk on this article and I will be more than happy to call on you. But just remember, you got three minutes to do it.
Steve, would you send this to your email? Or Debbie, would you send Stephen's email? I probably have it somewhere, but it's not on my phone.
Well, you can do it moderator@topsfieldmasc.gov is fine or.
Got it.
Is there any sentiment to table this till another year?
There is, I would say, Mike, sentiment to take advantage of a number of situations and do it this year. At least that's majority perspective on the board.
We. Mike, Mike, we had, we had significant conversation about should we delay it? Is now the right time? And it was decided that we would leave it in.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking of, I'm just thinking about being out there another 45 minutes, but I'll, I'll get tanning lotion. I'll be okay.
Bring, bring your umbrella.
I think I'm tanned now. Just wait till I'm actually outside.
All right. And the rest of the articles are, again, it's not a controversial warrant this year with the exception that maybe of the home rule, but everything else. And by the way, I'm hoping if we, you know, if time is, if we are protracted in our discussion, I am hoping that the third consent agenda will be Articles 27 through 33. So I'm going to move for a consent with those articles. And what, and we may not need those consents, but if we do those, that will be those and the ones that have to do with the fire station will be the second consent. And the third consent will be Articles 27 through 33.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
What, you know, you typically do Article One and then open the special?
The special town meeting will take place at 9:30. Typically, it's, it's a half an hour after the meeting starts, but we delayed it for an hour this year. So it will be going, we will be going into the STM at 9:30.
Okay. Um, because that's probably another way you could save a little time. Nothing on, I mean, Articles One and Two are pretty typical. So, and I don't see a Finance Committee recommendation on those. But, you know, if the Finance Committee recommends what's in the warrant, that might be another way to make up a little bit of time if, if it's.
Right. And typically, John, I think on the special town meeting, it's a positive recommendation for all warrants. Is that correct?
Well, I was going to bring that up next. So in the special town meeting, Article One reports, there's no report. So I don't think there's anything there. It's really Article Two and Article Three. Prior year bills and the budget transfers, those are normally, we don't know those numbers until right before town meeting. So Kevin, that's what I was mentioning to you this morning. Generally, in this meeting, we vote whatever those transfers are. And I, I don't think I've seen anything on that. So normally, you know, it's, it's May, whatever, we meet one hour before the joint meeting. We're not going to do one hour before Saturday. So I was hoping that today, if there's any of those that need to be voted on, we vote on them now. It's, it's moving, you know, I don't know, between 20 and $80,000, between eight, eight accounts to six accounts to make everything work. And I don't know if, if Catherine, if there's any of those happening this year or not. But that's why they're out there is that we don't know what those are as of right now.
So John, there are, there are no bills prior year. And I sent the three reserve fund transfers today. If those get passed tonight, then there would be no appropriation transfers either.
That's what I was going to ask you. Those are in lieu of Article Third, those are using reserve fund transfers.
Yes.
Okay.
It's roughly just over 6,000, between $6,000 and $7,000 total for three departments, three items. And that would, that would eliminate doing the appropriation transfers.
We got those very recently. I forwarded to the, to the, the whole Finance Committee. Did the liaisons have time to do any legwork on those?
I was able to on the, I have the information for the Health, Port of Health one.
Okay. About the other two?
Incom looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I thought so too. All right. So I.
And street lights, yeah.
Members thoughts, but I, I think we should entertain taking those up tonight, cleaning that up. Therefore, if Article Second and Article Third, there's nothing, then Mr. Moderator, you could probably just skip those in the town meeting and that, that'll speed up Saturday.
Okay.
Okay. So when I, when I look at our, so, so, Mr. Moderator, I will, after this call, I'll call you. Make sure you have the right Excel sheet that has the assignments for all the Finance Committee members. I sent that around to everybody who's on this call right now. Finance Committee member, I know a few of us were checking two or three different sets of files that were a little different. I think I cleared all of the, any inconsistencies up. So take a look at like, for example, Eric Menzer, on one list, you were on Fire PPE, but Karen Dow is taking Fire PPE. One OPAD, my name was listed, but it's really Che and Che is taking that one. Che, do you remember what the third one was?
It was a bus contracts. The bus contracts that I brought up with, with Kevin because I talked to Scott on the other side and, and they couldn't negotiate a five-year bus contract because town meeting was delayed. So they just locked in the three year. We had originally said positive action on that. Do we just change that to no action for the floor when we're up there or?
Yeah. So.
So again, if it's, if you're going to change the recommendation that's already been printed in the warrant, I think the best procedure for us is to vote down the recommendation and then offer the other recommendation and vote on that.
Well, the, the warrant has no.
Okay. As long as the warrant, if the warrant has no recommendation, then you just get up there and verbally give the recommendation that you want. If we're going for, if we're going for a three-year contract instead of a five-year contract.
Then it's moot.
It's moot.
It's, it's. The, the warrant article should be removed.
It's a moot warrant article.
Okay.
So. No vote.
So, oh, is that what you guys typically do? Because I don't, I don't recall there just being no action on an article.
Well, that's not the point. Yeah, Lauren, this hasn't really happened before. It was because of the timing of it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I heard, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, John.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah. I, I did, I heard, I heard about all of the, the back and forth. So I think we could just deal with it in, in opening, like motion, we'll just say there'll be no recommendation provided in an article and that, because no action is, is, because such action is no longer required. We'll just have it as part of the opening and that way you don't have to deal with it. Same with one and two and three on the special. And that way, it's just part of the initial discussion. I think.
There are no reports, there are no transfers, therefore there's no, there's no motion, no recommendation. And we just move on to the next one. Okay, cool.
Easiest that way, Stephen. Unless someone objects, we would say that that's, that's unanimous consent.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize the situation, but that's right. That's what we'll do.
Okay. What about four and five? Are four and five on the special at all controversial?
I don't think so. It's repurposing funds for things that we know we need.
That's our typical tanning repurposedment.
Right. So I wonder for that if, you know, and, and Steve, this is again, is up to you. But I wonder if you could say something like, I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to make a motion on both four and five with a very quick approval and we'll vote them together. And we're with a very quick explanation and we'll vote them together. Again, just trying to reduce the number of times you need to vote. It's not a requirement, but I guess if it's getting later and you really are still early on in the annual, then you can think about doing that.
Okay, I'm, I'm all for it. Anybody have any objections on that?
I think they'll, they'll be quick either way.
Okay.
Yeah, Karen Duvall or Karen Dow, you're on those four and five and you figure out who wants to do that up there. Okay.
Now, one other, one other point that I really haven't mentioned is tip, because we're going to be outside and the people are going to be spread out. When we take votes, I'm not sure whether a voice vote is going to be enough or sufficient to work. So we do have, we have distributed the cards and I may have people stand up in place and take a vote that way. So if it's not an overwhelmingly easy audible on the voice vote, you may see us taking those types of votes. And I'm going to check it early on and I'll check it with some, and do a, a little bit of a rehearsal on voice votes and see if we can see how audible, how easily it could be heard. So I'll be doing that as part of my opening remarks.
Your question, would you say that, does that mean that there's a interim step of instead of audible, if it doesn't work, you can just do a head, you can do a scan of the people who stood up and make an assessment? Or are you saying that if we can't do audible, we actually have to count each?
No, no, I'll be, I'll be trying to stand first. If I see, if I see a whole section standing up and there's only a couple of people standing up on the note, then I'm going to pass it.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Moderator, the, the one thing I just want to kind of remind you of, I know we talked about this yesterday, but I just want to make sure it stays at the forefront of your mind is that if it's super hot and there are a lot of people there that would be affected by, that are either older or have, you know, any kind of physical disabilities, you might want to think about trying to hold up the card separate from standing. Having everyone stand up and sit down sounds fine, but when it's 100 degrees out or 90 or whatever it is, that may lead to some issues. And I kind of am thinking that blood pressure, staying seated is easier and less risk of someone being overwhelmed by the heat. So I think.
Good point.
Yes, it makes a lot of sense, but I would see if you can get away with them just holding the card out. And I know you had talked with Beth about having different individuals kind of responsible for each section. And so they can make a quick look and if you had a question, you could have them count back in that section. That might reduce the risk.
Right. Good point.
Okay. Other topics before we move on to the three transfers.
So just, it's more maybe later on. What time should we be there? What's our, is there anything different? I mean, we're obviously not having the pre-meeting, but we should still.
This is the pre-meeting day. So it starts at 8:30. So we should probably all show up 8:00, 8:15. So we're there first. We can sign in and gather, but it's going to be hot, right? So.
We talked about that at the Board of Selectmen. We were getting there at eight.
Yeah, that sounds, that feels about right to me.
One other point is parking. There are, in the horseshoe behind Masco, there are only about 130 parking spaces. So if you get there at 8 o'clock or a quarter of eight, I'm going to be there at 7:30. And you can park in the other side, on the other side, leaving enough parking spaces for citizens and elderly citizens to park in the, in the horseshoe. Then I think that would be, that would be best.
Yeah. We're asking department heads and staff to park in that area too. So just from a consistency standpoint.
Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the ability, thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Do you have the ability to post those as handicap parking only?
So what we're doing is we have handicap that's halfway down the lot that we're going to bag those. And then we're going to put temporary handicaps, 13 temporary handicap spaces right in the circle where you can turn around with the first space. And we're going to be offering shuttle service for people. We're, you know, the 129th person, you know, is, needs a handicap spot. We'll be able to drop them off in this, in the circle if they choose to come up and then come back and park. And then we also have golf carts. We'll be running shuttles back and forth for people as well.
All right. Sounds like you thought all that through. It's good to hear.
Another question is, are we all going to wear masks?
Yes. So the masks are not necessarily, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I didn't mean it's.
Yeah, you can wear your mask going on to the field. When you get up to the mic, you can feel comfortable taking it off. But I mean, it's your personal decision as far as.
I'm just saying.
I would have a mask with me.
As leaders of the town, I would encourage as many of us to wear masks as possible. I think that's what I'm saying. I'm seeing way too many packs of eighth grade. I think that's what I'm saying. I'm seeing way too many packs of eighth grade boys walking around acting like life's normal. And I think they need to see that, you know, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I know it's not the plague, but I don't think it's the flu. You know, I, I've been socially distancing. And compared to some people locally, I know I'm, I'm not popular, but I'm, I'm going to wear my mask and try to stay away. That's just how I've been doing it. I think, yes, Lauren.
Thanks. So I wanted to just let you know that we, we have been to a number of town meetings so far, and there's definitely been an intentional effort by boards, FinCom, town staff to positively model mask wearing. I will say, and I, I know I told a few of you this yesterday, I went to a town meeting in Sunderland where it was 100 degrees on the blacktop and I had on a cloth mask, you know, that I wear around town. I thought I, literally I couldn't breathe. I was so incredibly hot. So I definitely suggest that if you're going to do that, you just wear the paper masks, have a couple extra because mine got so wet inside and only had that one. So I really do, I do think there's, there's value just from a public relations standpoint.
Lynn?
Just the letter that we sent out, Kevin and the Board of Selectmen, two folks, we asked everybody to wear a mask. So I think to your point, it would look disingenuous if we stood up there without masks when we asked everybody to wear one.
Can we get out of those?
I was going to say it.
I know. That's something, seriously, I'm telling you, the heat was a huge factor at this other town meeting. And I know that everybody wants to look really put together and formal, but you really need to think about how long you can last out there in formal clothes and make a decision that, you know, I think, I saw a lot of people wearing button-down shirts with the sleeves rolled up and a lot of people wearing polos like a lot of you are today. You know, I don't think it's possible. And Kevin, I don't know if this is bad news for you. I don't think it's possible to wear a suit.
I think, I think it's personally along the same line. It's, I want to encourage people to be comfortable. I'm, I'm wearing something like this.
I was going to wear a short sleeve shirt with like a collar, you know.
No takeout, Mike.
No, no, I'm sorry. That's, this is my way for work. Okay. So now, FinCom's much more important.
Before, any other questions or comments?
Kevin?
If I could real quickly, Mr. Moderator, just a couple other specific details worth noting. We're, we're planning right now, initially, we're going to have everybody up in the football stands looking down at, at, at the town. So we have a better perspective. Because of the heat, because their metal bleachers, we'll be down on the ground floor with tables in front of the, the bleachers behind us. Moderator will have the, his podium in the bleachers. And Beth will be up there to be able to observe and help with counts, et cetera. So we'll be socially distancing on those, in those tables, right, right in front. There'll be multiple mics on those tables for the FinCom to use. And we'll have spray there so you can spray them down if there's a point where you need to speak into them. And Carolyn will be, actually, we talked about at the end of the table, sort of looking in towards the group of people, us, the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom and myself sitting down below. And also, there were some questions about chairs. We're going to be individual chairs 10 feet apart in the football field, but what we're thinking of doing is grouping sets of two in the back section, so that if people want to be with somebody that they come with, we'll direct them, usher people to that location. So if they're an individual or they don't necessarily have a preference, we'll put them in the single seats up front. And also, we did recommend people who might have a need to bring their own chairs with them as well. And we'll help by ushering, the ushers will help take that chair away, replace it with their chair when they come in, if they choose to do so. And the handicap seating will be right up front on the track itself. So anyone who is not able to walk into the grassy area can sit there, or if they're wheel, using a wheelchair, they can, or some other device that they need, they'll be able to go right up front and avoid having to go on the grass.
I was, I was, I was asked today where we intend to put people who come, want to come to the town meeting, but they are not residents of Topsfield.
Well, I addressed that in part of the opening remarks. I will address that in part of the, typically what Topsfield has done, as long as they're a staff member, then they, they can sit with the, with the town residents. But if they're, they're, not that, not that they have to, but I don't know if any outside residents would have reason to be there other than Brad Sweet, who, Brad Sweet's going to be doing the audio, right? Is he doing a video of this too, Kevin?
That's my understanding.
But the other thing, is that, answer your question, Boyd?
Well, there is one guy that I suspect strongly is going to be there, and he has no connection with the town of Topsfield anymore. He used to be on the planning board. He lives up here at Gray Hill most of the time with his ex-wife. And I have a hunch, he's the one that asked me the question. And I have a-
So is he a resident of Topsfield?
No.
He's not, oh, he isn't.
Resident of New Hampshire.
Okay. Well, let me know and I'll introduce him to me or something and we'll find a seat for him.
One of the thoughts we had too is, so we, we're going to have tents available for emergency situations on the sides of the field. So if somebody has heat exhaustion or something like that. We were talking at one point, it hasn't come up in a couple weeks, but so we'll fine tune it tomorrow during setup. But we were actually thinking of putting a section of seats behind the goalposts, but in front of the medical area. So they're separate from the other sections where everyone is. And if we're doing a visual count, we, we can separate them out that way.
And, and we will, it won't be a free-for-all when the meeting's over. We're going to try and organize it, a kind of an exit plan here. And there will be two sides to the field where people can exit. And obviously, one, one side leads to each parking lot. But I probably will ask people to stay in certain sections until one section has left so that we don't get into that kind of a free-for-all situation that typically happens at the end of town meeting. Karen Duvall, one please.
Kevin, just a quick question for you. I had intended to bring my own chair that has a lovely shade over the top of it. One, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going to obstruct anyone's view by doing that. And then should I have someone take the other chair away for me? Or can I just?
You can just fold it and lay it flat on the ground and use your chair.
Gotcha.
So the only one behind you, Karen, will be the moderator. He'll be elevated so that that chair should be absolutely fine.
Okay, great.
Bring one for me, Karen.
Everything's up north, so I'm having to borrow down here.
I have a question for Karen. Is this the beach chair sort of thing that is relatively low to the ground?
No, I will not be sitting in a beach chair. It's, it's a camp chair height.
Ah, yes. I had a problem. I had a, I had a beach chair and I realized, can't sit at the desk that way. I have a camp chair. Dick, Dick, if you want it, I have a camp chair you can borrow for that purpose. Okay. I, I, I may take you up on it. I'll bring it with me. I'll bring, I'll bring it with me. That would be great because I think it'll be in great demand. Right. No problem. I also want to announce to the Finance Committee that, as you probably know, Lou is stepping down, stepping off the Finance Committee for next year. It's the end of his term. But I also have talked to David Larson, who I guess is on the call right now, so, because I see his name. But David will be appointed to the Finance Committee for the next three years, a three-year term, and he will be joining the Finance Committee. So, and-
All right. You have to show your face. You can't be blurry anymore.
That's a good move, in my opinion. I've tried to get him more involved for two years and he's always shied away from it. So if you talked him into doing FinCom, that's good.
Yeah, he's, he's a good guy.
Lou, we'll miss you, buddy.
Lou, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Miss you, Lou.
Lou, I appreciate your hard work and I really, I want to, I will say this, even at the town meeting, you served double. You were serving on the government committee and the Finance Committee. And I know how that stresses out family life, so I appreciate that a great deal.
Thanks.
Lou, what are you going to do with all your time?
I'm going to spend time with my family and my puppy. And that's pretty much it. Work, family and puppy.
Done, great.
My lawn too.
Not a bad idea.
Not Mike's lawn.
All right. Anything else or should we move to the, the three transfers?
All right, let's get it done.
All right. Let's do the, I'll entertain a discussion about the $146.48 for the minute taker for Finance Committee. I believe we needed, we need to make sure the account wasn't going to go into deficit, right, Catherine? That's what we missed. So 100 and, you're asking, oh, you, it's $150 even to cover the 146.48?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just make the motion to approve? Do we really need it to test?
I'm entertaining a motion with Che.
Motion to approve a transfer of $150 for note taking over the expensive, expensive extra meetings we've had?
I think Eric got the second first for our minutes. And we need to do a roll call vote. Go into the, the section, I won't repeat it from the beginning. Mike?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Karen? Okay, John, wait up outside. So that passes unanimously. Okay, the second is the streetlights. Who wants to take it?
I don't have it in front of me. But that usually would be mine.
Yeah, hold on. I'll pull it back up.
You gotta make the last motion.
What's a streetlight, Lou?
Leaving your legacy here with street-
$300, Lou.
36 even?
Lights. Anticipating a shortfall, three months of invoice is outstanding. Cost is roughly 2,700 a month.
So we're, it's 3,600 even. So I, I move that we approve a transfer from the reserve fund of $3,600 paid for outstanding bills for streetlights.
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mike Harmon?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Karen Duvall?
Aye.
Karen Dow?
Aye.
John votes aye. And the third one is the Board of Health Dead Animals. Talking about a lot of dead animals this year, people.
Hey, what's happening? I mean, just-
Someone pick up the one at the bottom of pallet?
Amount requested is $3,000. The, we are, we have, are anticipating a shortfall. Parks and Cemetery has been taking the lead for many years. Midway through the fiscal year, it's determined Board of Health needed to fulfill this function. Board of Health was able to secure a contract with TW Excavating for this purpose. Cost to date are 3,300. Expecting bills for June. It was initially, it was initially 1622 and costs are, costs are supposed to be 4,500.
Right. And these costs are really associated with, we've run out of space to throw the dead animals into Parks and Cemetery?
That was part of it, coupled with the Parks and Cemetery staff would go pick them up previously.
Okay.
But there was a feeling that that wasn't appropriate, that they didn't have the right protective gear, that it was a risk to the town. So they wanted to hire and have a contract to do it. It's under the Board of Health's responsibility to keep it, to do it. So it fell back on the, when the Parks and Cemetery said, we shouldn't do this, be doing this, it fell back on the Board of Health to find a solution. And that's where they engaged with TW Excavating.
Oh, that's that guy on Route One, right? Yeah, okay.
And so it's, the pickup cost that I have from my notes from a while ago, and just, you know, I, we spoke about this back in February.
Sure.
And we did raise that they thought that the budget would be, at the time, she said it was going to be about 4,300.
We told them, we said we should do it now at the end of the year.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
3,000 is the amount, Catherine. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve a transfer of $3,000 for the Board of Health Dead Animal Pickup Line Item.
Second.
Second by Karen Dow. Roll call vote. Mike?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Karen Duvall?
Aye.
Karen Dow?
Aye.
John votes aye. So that's unanimous. And then I would entertain another motion. So when Catherine and Kevin need me to sign these documents, we typically have all Finance Committee members sign it. I would entertain a motion to authorize me to sign those three, you know, one motion for all three executions.
Okay, Karen, make the motion.
Make the motion to allow John to sign all three documents for the Finance Committee.
With a second by Lou. A roll call vote. Mike?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Karen Duvall?
Aye.
Karen Dow?
Aye.
All abstained. Thank you for, for doing me such a great honor. Lou, I think that was your, well, I guess we have an adjourned. So there's one more vote left for Lou. Thank you, Lou.
Oh, yeah. I move that we adjourn.
Anything, anything else?
The Board of Selectmen has one piece, we have one piece to do. If you want to adjourn, but we have one piece that we're supposed to do.
We can, we can hang on just to make sure there's nothing else anybody needs.
Yeah.
Dick, yes, I'm not, go ahead.
Okay, this is Board of Selectmen. I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, approval of the Water Department budget as presented in Article Fourth of the meeting warrant.
They're a second.
Second.
Second, Lynn. Any discussion?
Do we know anything about the rates, by the way, Kevin?
The rates are going to be increasing, but they will not be increasing at the growth that over the last few years, as I understand. Those were greater than 10% at times. This, I don't know the exact number of where that rates are, but I know that it's-
Kevin, is Greg Kron going to be there at town meeting?
He will be.
Okay. Just prep him that that will be a first question someone will ask if they do that. So just have that number in place.
You, you might want to encourage him just to give a, two seconds on it because he might be able to, Steve, provide the color so we don't have to get the question. It might be faster, actually.
Right.
I'll make a note, absolutely.
Among the Board of Selectmen, is there any further discussion? We ready for a vote? Roll call, Boyd.
Mute on, Boyd, mute on.
Boyd, you're muting.
Presses.
Boyd, you're muted. Vote aye. Lynn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Are there any other further business for the Board of Selectmen? I'd entertain a motion. Do you have a motion to adjourn a second?
Aye.
You have a second. Roll call vote. Lynn?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The Board of Selectmen is adjourned.
All right, guys. Thanks very much. And Lauren and Carolyn, thank you for joining us. And Carolyn, I'll see you on Saturday.
Yes, you will.
One second. I'll entertain a motion for the Finance Committee to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, thank you.
I, I dressed up for this occasion. No one said anything.
Your backlit, your backlit. We can't see you.
Oh, all right. There's my, my tuxedo.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Eric seconds. Roll call vote. Che?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Karen Duvall?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Karen Dow?
Karen Dow, aye.
John votes aye as well. It's unanimous. We're adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, guys.
The everybody, Saturday morning, including you, Carolyn.
Yes, you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.